Good evening. I'll call this November 26, 2024 meeting of council to order at 4:32 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council, staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. We would ask that everyone rise at this time for the playing of the National Anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on ancestral lands of the Hodonashani, Mississauga and Olmama-Winney people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all Indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two Row Wampan, Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27 and the Crawford Purchase. So the first item up is confirmation of the agenda. Do I have a mover for the confirmation this evening? Councillor Proderick. Confirming that the agenda of the November 26, 2024 meeting of council be confirmed is circulated. Do we have a seconder? Councillor Ennis. Call the question, all in favor. Motion has passed. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session for today's meeting? Seeing none. We would now entertain a motion to go into closed session and that the mover could just read the recommendation to go into closed. Deputy Mayor.
Through your worship, I move that council now move into closed session to consider a property or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, potential disposition of land, telecommunications tower, and also advice subject to solicitor-client privilege and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, Ontario Land Tribunal Appeal, William Street, pursuant to Section 239.2 CE and F of the Municipal Act.
It's all moved, seconded by Councillor Boudrick. Call the question, all in favor. Motion has passed, we are closed.
Okay, six o'clock, so we'll call the meeting back to order. Council actually started at four thirty this evening. We did the opening portion of the meeting, and then went into closed session to deal with a couple of items there. And I would report out of closed session that we received advice subject to the solicitor client. client privilege, and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, Ontario Land Tribunal Appeal for William Street pursuant to section two nine, two three nine two, C, E, and F of the municipal act. And we also have a motion that will be coming out of closed into open session. We'll be bringing it in shortly on the screen for council to deal with that motion. Okay, so the motion is on the screen. Counsel, do I give you a minute to read over? Ready, I would take a mover for the motion. Counselor Prudrick?
I would move that the report from the Clerks Division dated November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, re-lease agreement with Explorer, Inc. Be received that council approved the lease agreement with Explorer, Inc. in the general form and con- content as in attachment two, that council authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to execute the lease agreement once finalized to the satisfaction of the chief administrative officer, and that the proponent be requested to present to council regarding the anticipated rollout of the project.
So move. Do I have a second? Counsel Willis. Call a question. All in favor, motion is passed. Next are his presentations. We have two presentations. The first one is Harold Parsons, CEO, and Amanda Herrera. Sorry, you can correct me when you come up, Director, Resource Development and Communications with BGC. So if you wish to just come up, have a seat, there's a button on here you can push that it lights up the mic and go ahead and provide your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. It's a great opportunity for us to come tonight to talk a little bit about the partnership with BGC Southeast, both today, historically, and then potentially discussion about what future opportunities may look like. Amanda and I will present. She's given me the opportunity to speak, and she's here to certainly assist and has been is our Director of Resource Development and Communications, and is a key to working with Loyalist Township staff in the sense of what we're doing. Thank you. So a little bit on the history of what was previously called Boys and Girls Club of Kingston area. Started in nineteen ninety-three, incorporated primarily for the highest needs that the community of Kingston established at the time, which was primarily to Rio Heights community. The club started to help children and youth that were disadvantaged, whether that meant financially or in household that didn't have the same resources and opportunities as others in the community. It's also seen as a way to reduce crime by giving mentorship and youth opportunities to be in a safe environment. I kind of come into the fold in nineteen ninety-nine from a club in Ottawa, and actually our relationship and history with working with Loyalist Township goes back to two thousand and one through Pat Byer and Cindy Lawson. So we do have some history here, but just lately we've been with Lori and Carrie doing a lot more and more substantial things. Our club is broken down in sort of two ways. One is that we operate licensed programs, and you're familiar with your area with Lark, who does a great job and provide licensed childcare and after-school programs. We do that in two locations in Kingston, and we also are the early on provider in Kingston as well in partnership with KCHC. But where we come into play here is that we've also started to look at what we call refer to as authorized recreation, and that is in communities that either have high priority needs that may not need a licensed program or a daycare setting. But there's opportunities for children from ages four to eighteen to be served and provided services. So our authorized recreation programs, they include two high priority schools in Rio Heights, in Kingston, in Joyful, in Harrow Smith, and in Amherstew. And that's a way that we're able to start delivering after-school programs at a low fee to parents, but also start to meet some of the needs in the community as well. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. So when you look at the club, you think about what parents may need, if they need daycare because they're going to work or they're in school, if they're looking for a place after school for their children for the same purposes, or for enhancement for programs for their children as well. Our programs consist of physical activity, of some education supports, and health and nutrition. And, you know, I'm pretty happy to talk about our numbers and our growth, because they've been continuing to expand year after year. We talk about impact. We start to say, okay, you know, at what point do you go from having all these children after school to how can you start to measure what you're doing in your communities that you're delivering services to? We go back to a few things. We think that there's some critical opportunities that are lacking. One of them is in literacy. So we actually have partnered, and we now have acquired the reading clinic, which is a one-on-one multisensory literacy approach for children that is dyslexic or below the reading curve. And we've been doing that for about six years now, and we implement that into all of our programs so that children that come to the club as early as kindergarten have been given an advantage to reading. And then those that are struggling, we have that program as well, which is one-on-one tutoring. Recently, we acquired the STEM robotics lab, and we can just click the next slide to show that. So we now have a nine thousand square foot lab in our main site in the west end of Kingston in the Frontak Mall with over a half million dollars' worth of machinery, and we're able to provide three levels of robotics for children and youth. And again, acknowledging that there's the ability to give children and youth the skill sets to either go to post-secondary, but also job readiness in case you do not go to post-secondary, but they're more employable now as eighteen, nineteen-year-olds joining the workforce. And we think that's something that's missing with those opportunities, and we also believe that many of the youth just simply don't know what they're interested in yet because they're, you know, they're sixteen, seventeen years old, and they're, they may not like what mom and dad's doing, but they might want to look at other things, or in fact, they may be involved in what they also do. So that's happening at the main center as well. A lot of these projects just happened over the last couple of weeks, well, they've been months in the making. The other thing we've been doing is we look at communities and look at opportunities from a fund development side. We can go to the next slide, please. So we, although we're an incorporated not-for-profit, we also very much look at ourselves as a business, and we look at our programs that we deliver, and the only qualifier we have is that no child is denied access due to inability to pay. But we provide services and we charge fees that are different depending on what they might be. But some examples, like Bricks for Kids, we started about ten years ago when it was a LEGO and LEGO Robotics business that we'd go into schools during lunch hour and provide that, and parents would pay a small fee, and children would have lunch with our staff, and they would learn some STEM as an example. The second is we now have a mini putt and golf and game simulator business in Kingston as well, which is called The Bunker. And that was about having low-fee opportunities for families to have birthday parties for children and for businesses and families to use. And it's another example of us looking at where the market is, what can we do to help the community, and then proceeds go back into supporting the Boys and Girls Club as well. So that's sort of just a couple of quick things. Then we'll go to the next slide, and the other thing with with us is that we actually also operate Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Kingston, Frontak, Lennington, Addington. A number of years ago, we had a board member that was on both boards. He talked about smaller organizations that are, you know, under two hundred thousand dollars in budget, and talked about the resources that they have, and although they have a really strong mission, vision, values, felt that they didn't have the ability to fundraise and share their story. So at the time, our board directors from the Boys and Girls Club, their board directors got together, worked at a partnership agreement that they would retain their charitable status, but one board of directors would be formed, and then they would serve on both organizations. As a result, we've been able to improve our retention of employees such as child and youth care workers because they can work in the daytime for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and then after school with Boys and Girls Club. Amanda and her role, and myself and my role, and a couple of other senior staff in finance, we oversee finance admin, fund development for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So every employee that works for that organization is frontline and service delivery. As a result, we've seen more than triple the numbers of children served. We've more than tripled the budget for the organization, and we've now been able to go into communities that the Boys and Girls Club were not able to before, and we've particularly expanded Big Brothers, Big Sisters and Loyalist Township through in-school mentoring. And that's been great to see in the synergies and working with families and children that have greater needs for support as well. Now we'll jump into the partnership with Loyalist. So we've already submitted a report through the Recreation Department, but, you know, a couple of things happened that changed our scope, I think, from an organization perspective. One of them changed everybody's world, and that was during the pandemic. When COVID happened, our organization, Boys and Girls Club, was the only organization in the city of Kingston to deliver summer camp. And as a result of that, we ended up getting not only the support from families that appreciated that, but also businesses and foundations that year, including the city of Kingston. And from that and providing daycare for frontline workers, it really changed, I think, our profile. And we went from three thousand children being served in two thousand twenty to over five thousand children today because we retained them, and now they can see that they can go right through from either daycare after-school program or youth programs as well, which have no fees. In Loyalist, it's been since two thousand twenty-one since we've really looked at this. We've been, you know, we've stepped up when the swimming pool was down for renovations, and we're really happy to have Loyalist Township as a partner for aquatics. We see the partnership here as great as we do any other municipality, and because of our proximity, you know, we're again more than happy to see the number of families we've been able to serve. This year's summer camp in Amherstew and Bath have been very successful, almost ninety-three to ninety-four percent filled. You know, we've had nineteen staff, the majority that live in Loyalist Township work for us in those areas, and we've been able to provide a lot of families with subsidies, almost twenty thousand dollars to make sure those children can attend a camp at either no fee or greatly reduced fee. In the next slide, we talk about, since two thousand fourteen, we moved into the new space in the Frontak Mall. We've been providing transportation for families from three local schools in Amherstew on our busing system to come to the site. And that's been great, and, you know, we would have as many as twenty to forty children come. But we also talking about expansion and growth and serving communities as well. And then we thought, well, how can we take children from a community, bring them into another site, then try to develop programs in that community? It just really doesn't make sense. So this past year, it wasn't necessarily a popular decision, but we did decide that for this school year that we would no longer provide transportation from Amherstew to Kingston, but we would deliver an after-school program in Amherstew. And it took us a lot of work to get it started, but we think the potential and the growth will be substantial. So we're happy to be in Amherstew Public School, and we have children from the three of the local elementary schools being served there. But we can only see that as growing in the future. But again, mindset of if you want to develop in a community, then you have to be in the community, and we made that happen this year. Our Big Brothers, Big Sisters in School Mentoring, you know, we're continuing to grow that and expand it, and over fifty children served in some of the local schools here as well. Then we'll just go to the next slide, please. You already have your package, so I won't read the partnership testimonial, but it is important to know that a lot of the families that are accessing that are residents in Loyalist Township, they certainly are letting us know that they appreciate programming and additional programming in their community. The last thing I have, you know, I guess that we have, is simply about future opportunities. So we know that there's a demand and a need to provide an after-school program in other locations, and, you know, our organization tends to look at who's doing it first, and if there's a void, then we do explore it. If there's an existing organization doing it, we're more than happy to pass on our support and potentially partner, or not even partner, because our last thing that we want to do is affect another organization doing the great work that they are. But we do know that summer camps are still needed and in demand, and we know that Odessa in particular has been some challenges because of school renovations and so on over the last couple of years. But certainly in our plans this year would be programming for the summertime in Bath, Amherstew, and Odessa. And we also know that we're getting feedback from Amherst Island as well about what can we do there and how do we support children that live on the island. So, you know, interesting that some of these things that we're looking at now, I looked at, I hate to say the year, but I think it was two thousand and one to two thousand and two. So we, although we're making some headway, we know there's more to do, and we're happy that since we changed our name to BGC Southeast, that Amherstew is very much in the fold of what we see as a service delivery opportunity. That combined with expanding our Big Brothers, Big Sisters to a lot of different smaller communities and schools will continue to be our strategic plan over the next year. You know, this is one of those rare opportunities where you get not-for-profit coming in asking for nothing. But it's, what I do ask is that you do consider what we're doing as an organization, how we may fit in the future for what you maybe want to do. We have a great relationship with the Recreation Department, and, you know, we're here to support and to do as much or as little as, I think, council or Loyalist Township staff would see us. But we're a resource there, and, you know, we're here to support the community, and we believe that children, it doesn't matter where they live, it's our mission, vision to support as much as we can. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, any questions or comments this time? Counselor Prudrick?
I'll make a comment because I can't resist through you. I think I first met Harold back in two thousand, but I know the first, one of the first programs started at St. Pat's in nineteen ninety-three, and I was the principal at the time, and to see the growth is amazing. And I think the most important thing I get out of it is that, and you would know the names better than I, but the number of kids, at least from that St. Pat's community, that became sort of mentors within your program, and some of them actually worked in your program, moved on to different things, and I think that's what makes the program unique. And the fact you're doing a reading clinic from an educator's point of view, that's unbelievable, because I know schools at this time, it's hard to support those things. So just thanks to both you and your staff.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Saying none. Thank you for the presentation, and it's great to see the new programs. I toured, I guess it's been a couple of years now since I toured it, and some of the photos that I saw there, they were still in the dream spot, I guess, at that time, and working towards them. So it's really great to see them come to fruition and being utilized. And I know it's been, you've been a great asset to the municipality and to our residents. So it's great to have you here, share the information, and be brought up to speed on the new options since I was through at last.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation if someone would like to make a motion. Counselor Willis? Counsel Willis.
I move that the presentation from Harold Parsons and Amanda Guarino of BCG Southeast regarding the annual summer camp report be received.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover, seconder, others? Call the question home. Favor. Motion is passed. We have one more presenter this evening for the Fire Services Master Plan, and I believe Terry Gervais from Lumex is being brought in virtually for that.
If you'd just bear me one second, I'll just share a very short presentation for you.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. And Counsel, thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes of your busy schedules to just talk a little bit about your master fire plan process and your community risk assessment review. What we want to do tonight, I'll just give you a quick, real brief overview of the Lumex group, and talk a little bit about the project background, and certainly, Your Worship will certainly take any questions that your counsel might have. So a little bit about the Lumex group, we're a company based out of Peterborough. We're a North American-wide company. We have to work across Canada and the US. And we have a number of divisions that work in the aviation industry, but we also have a very strong division that works in the emergency management field, as well as the fire services and municipal field. I'm the Vice President of the Response and Readiness Group, which this portfolio falls in with fire master planning and emergency management and community risk assessments. The team that we put together for your project, for the chief, is I will be the advisor, Bill Lormer will be your lead, and you can see, I don't have to read all the names, you can see a number of names there. We do have a GIS specialist internal for doing mapping and that. We have financial, and we have a number of fire and life safety specialists. This entire group has years and years in working in both the senior management group of municipal and fire services, and every one of them have experience, all the main writers all have experience in working both with volunteer composite and full-time fire services. So a little bit about your, the background, just your review. So as most counsel knows, the CRA identifies and examines what risks that you might have in your community. You did complete your CRA in 2023. What we've been asked to do in the RFP process is to review your 2023 CRA and then verify that it's current, with meeting your current risk needs and circumstances, compare it with, to the regulation 378-18, and make any recommendations to the chief going forward to deal with the CRA. The chief has made a, this is a good move for the service and the chief, asking for this. When we do community risk assessments, we actually recommend that, even though the legislation is every five years, that you really should review it every year, because as the municipality changes, so could the risk within your municipality. So just a little bit about your fire master plan. What the purpose of a fire master planner is, is to help the community to look at the requirements and making sure you're meeting the legislative requirements, especially the Fire Protection and Prevention Act, which is the main governing body for fire services, but all the other legislation, like health and safety, et cetera. Be able to give a real clear picture of what your current and anticipated fire protection needs and life safety needs. Recommend any strategies to protect lives and property, looking at the three lines of defense, the public education, code of force and fire suppression. And as well in there are strategies to help protect the firefighters and firefighter's safety, because as counsel is well aware, that's very important. And provide information and provide guidance on any operational or budgetary decisions from a strategic perspective. What our approach is, is we've done our startup meeting, and we began the process with the chief. We will be very shortly starting the stakeholder engagement sessions. The engagement sessions will include the members of the department, right from the firefighters right on up with the chief. We'll be meeting with the CAO. We haven't finalized, but there is abilities to do public surveys and council surveys as well, too, if that's so chosen. We'll be doing a lot of data collection. So this is not owners on the department, but it's fairly substantial, because a lot of the, you're not only reviewing your CRA, but dealing with the fire master plan, is dealing on your history, and what historically have you been doing. We usually take that last five-year window. What are you doing for calls? How are you managing your calls? What are you doing for public education? What are you doing for training? And then once we gather that, it also then allows the look of what you need to do in kind of a form. We'll develop a draft fire master plan that we will circulate to the fire chief and whoever he chooses that needs to go. We'll give them time to review the draft, and then we'll set up a meeting and review the draft with them, and update or make any changes that both the department or we feel are necessary. Then we'll have a final report. We'll complete the final report and then present that to counsel. So these are just some of the areas that we review. These are the typical, like the table contents of the master plan. They do change as the project goes on. Sometimes some of them will come together, or we might find something, wow, we got to break that out and put that in its own separate heading. But as you can see, it's really going ready, right through from your legislation pieces to your bylaws, to the, any agreements that you currently have with neighboring departments. We're going to look at social dynamics and communications, emergency management, your health and safety, public education, level of service training, that's so important right now with the new certification. How is the training programs being managed? How is the department going to be able to meet the 2026 and the 2028 milestones? We'll look at the fire stations, water supply and asset management. And while we'll look at the current, the current status of the department, what we really want to try to provide the chief and counsel is that strategic view of what you need to kind of do in the next five to 10-year window in order to stay ahead of the challenges that are happening within municipalities and certainly within the fire service. The guiding principles, I mentioned it just briefly earlier, is public education, code enforcement and five fire suppression. Years ago, it was all about the fire suppression. It was all about the trucks going down the road with the flashing lights. Now we look at these three as those three lines of defense, but we put kind of reverse it. Fire suppression is still important, you got to have it, but public education, code enforcement's got to be right up there, and they're measurable ways. They're really, when you have a fire or an incident that the fire service has to go to, there's an unknown cost, because you don't know the time it's going to take. Where if public education and code enforcement are controlled costs, you can help provide life safety systems by using the controlled costs versus the fire suppression. Stakeholders I talked briefly about, so counsel, municipal staff as required, the ones that we need to discuss with, the fire department staff, residents through surveys and businesses, and any municipal partners that may deem to be necessary as we kind of work through. And some of this will change, similar to the table of contents, some of this will change as we go, something will come to light, and then we'll think, geez, we should talk with the water department, for example, to talk about the hydrant system, and that's just an example. The SWOT analysis, so it's an engagement with all the local personnel, and it's vital of the process. It's important, because they're the ones delivering the service, it's important to hear from their firsthand insights into the department. We'll do it in group sessions, one-on-one sessions and surveys as required. We really truly want to try to let, get everybody involved in the fire service. So the goals as set out in the RFP was to identify and evaluate the current anticipated fire protection needs for your municipality, assess the fire protection services that you currently receive in the municipality, provide strategies, identify resources that Loyalist Township can use to manage its current and anticipated protection needs adequately and cost effectively, also concern the amount of growth that you have, you're having in Loyalist Township as well, to look at that and what that's next, next five to 10 years going to look like. And then of course, provide recommendations, I mentioned, to enhance the fire protection services over the next five and 10 years. And what this should do to for counsel and for the chief is to plan properly for budgetary, rather than having a surprise happen four or five years down the road, you could start looking at what counsel needs to provide, or what through the budget process the department will need over the next five to 10 years. And with that, Your Worship, that's the short presentation I have, and I'm certainly available for any questions that you or counsel might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions at this time? Looks like you must have covered it all, there's no questions. Well done.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for providing that information this evening, we appreciate it. And counsel, we do have a recommendation to receive if someone would like to make a motion. Counsel Prager.
I would move that the presentation from Terry Gervais of Lumex regarding the fire services master plan be received.
So moved. Do I have a seconder? Counsel Bugrick. Any comments from the mover, seconder, others? Call the question home. Favor. Motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Gervais. The next item is public meeting and recommendation report, zoning bylaw amendment applications. So as staff are coming up, I'll just read the opening statement here. A public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of Section 3412 of the Planning Act to consider an amendment to the Loyalist Township zoning bylaw. The three applications for a zoning bylaw amendment applies to properties described as Block 31, 29M-57, Block 34, 29M-57, and lots 115, sorry, 215 and 216, Plan 91 on Emma Street, Odessa. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment, if approved, will rezone the lands to address a number of site-specific performance standards to help facilitate the creation of eight single detached lots. Counsel shall hear any person or his or her counsel, solicitor or agent, any person who claims to be affected by this application. So welcome, staff. Do you have any information to share at this time on this project? Please go ahead, Mr. Soni.
Through you, through you, Your Worship. Before I provide a quick description into these applications, I just want to bring the attention of the counsel that there has been a background system error. So if you were to look to the link to the staff report, it reflects some, another application, but it would be corrected, and that it has nothing to do with the staff recommendation for this applications. So that being said, quickly moving to provide quick description on this application. So three zoning applications are proposed to amend the subject properties under consideration in order to support future consent and part lot lift applications with the purpose to create eight separately conveyable parcels from the three of, three existing parcels. So statutory public meeting was held in accordance with the Planning Act on November 27, 2023, to obtain initial input from public and counsel. The public concerns primarily related to lot size, reduced area of parking spaces, and the decrease in the parking requirements for primary dwelling units. The public expressed concerns that these changes could lead to increased on-street parking, especially given the limited public or private transportation options in Odessa, which might, or which may impact the functioning of the snowplows and emergency vehicles. So the revised development proposal before the counsel is in response to the comments that were raised from the public agencies, technical agencies, and from the township staff. And because of these changes, there is need for this additional statutory public meeting to bring forward those changes in front of the counsel. So quickly heading to the major revisions. So the revisions that have been made to the proposal since its initial submissions, submission include the submission of geotechnical assessment, hydrogeological assessment and soil characterization study, which have led to the removal of requirement of holding symbol, which was required as a part of the initial proposal. And additionally, the following changes have been made to the site-specific bylaw compared to the initial proposal, those being no further reduction in the parking space is being requested. So now the parking are in conformity with the standard requirement as per the township zoning bylaw. The same goes with the request to reduce the area of the parking spaces. It has no longer been requested. So again, it is in conformity with the township zoning bylaw. The properties have been pushed back by two meters, that is, the front yard setback has been increased from four meters, which was initially proposed, to six meters now. And specific to the easternmost lot, the interior side yard setback has been increased from 1.2 meters to 2.5 meters. So with these changes to the initial proposal and the detailed technical review of the applications by the staff, the staff is of the opinion that these three zoning applications are in conformity with the planning legislation, and that staff recommends approval for these three zoning applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none. Thank you. And I believe there is a representative from the owners that are, or the developer that is available for questions, but there's no presentation, so I just wanted to make everyone aware that he was available. So if that concludes the presentation, I'll open it up to the public for the public portion. So if there's anyone in chambers that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward, and you can address counsel. And I'll just put it on notice that we'll be going to the virtual audience yet, next. So if there's anyone in the virtual audience, please use the raised hand feature, so we'll know to bring you into the meeting. So back to chambers, if there's anyone that wishes to speak. Seeing none. We'll go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak, please use the raised hand feature. Seeing none. Okay, so that concludes the public meeting portion. So counsel, we do have the report with recommendation. Would someone like to put a recommendation on the floor? Counsel Prager.
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship. I would move that the report from the Development Services Division dated November 26, 2024, Republic Meeting and Recommendation Report, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications, Emma Street, Block 31, 29M-57, D-014-2023, Block 34, 29M-57, D-14-011-2023, and lots 215-216, Plan 91, D-14-015-2023 be received. Two, that the application to amend the zoning bylaw, D-14-014-2023 be approved, and the bylaw 2024-98 being a bylaw to rezone the lands from residential type III exception 16 holding, R3-16-H zone, to residential type III exception 26, R3-26, and residential type III exception 27, R3-27 zones respectfully be enacted and passed. That the application to amend the zoning bylaw, D-14-011-2023 be approved, and that the bylaw 2024-98 being a bylaw to rezone the land from residential type III exception 16 holding, R3-16-H zone, to residential type III exception 26, R3-26, zone be enacted and passed. And four, that the application to amend the zoning bylaw, sorry, D-14-015-2023 be approved, and that the bylaw... and that the bylaw twenty twenty-four dash ninety-eight being a bylaw to rezone the land from residential type-two exception nine, R two dash nine zone, to residential type three exception twenty-six, R three twenty-six zone be enacted and passed.
So so moved. Seconded by the deputy mayor. Any comments from the mover?
I would just say that thanks to the staff for dealing with some of the earlier issues that the residents had, and they seem to, I believe, in my opinion, addressed all the issues.
Thank you. Seconder? Any others? Call the question home. Favor. Motion is passed. Next is public meeting for Fields of Loyalist Creek for Developments. And while staff are coming up, I'll read the preamble for this one as well. A public, excuse me, a public meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of section seventeen fifteen thirty-four twelve and fifty-one twenty of the Planning Act to consider a draft plan of subdivision, official plan amendment, and zoning bylaw amendment. The proposed application applies to parts, part of lots twenty-nine and thirty concession three and four in Odessa. The proposed subdivision consists of one hundred and ninety-four single detached dwellings and three hundred and ninety semi-detached dwelling units, and two medium-density blocks consisting of one hundred and three units for a total of six hundred and eighty-seven residential units. Two parkland blocks, multi-use pathways connecting the development with Main Street, and that's County Road Two, and expansion of the existing Odessa West Stormwater Management Facility. The proposed amendment to the Loyalist Township Official Plan, if approved, will redesignate the subject lands from rural to medium-density residential and low density, low-density residential to facilitate, facilitate the development of residential uses. The proposed amendment to the Loyalist Township zoning bylaw, two thousand and one thirty-eight, as amended, if approved, will rezone the lands from rural zone and future development D zone to the residential type-five zone and residential type-four zone. Open space zone and environmental protection zone to address a number of site-specific performance standards to facilitate the development of single detached, semi-detached, and medium-density residential units. Counsel should hear in person or by his or her counsel, solicitor or agent, any person who claims to be affected by this application. So now that I need a drink of water, I'll turn it over to staff if there's any information to provide.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Um, you pretty much covered everything I was going to say. I I I will say that we did have a, this will be the second public meeting. We did have a public meeting in two thousand twenty-three. That a number of residents had had a number of questions, and the applicant has worked with staff through their engineers and planning consultants to modify the plan to meet a lot of the the feedback they heard. Other than that, I'll, I, the modifications are listed in the report, but I won't steal the thunder of the planners that are here from FOTEN. I'll let them let them go through their changes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for staff at this time? Counsel Pradrik.
Thank you. And through you, just a question, Mr. Casmore. So a lot of within that report, there are several mentions under technical review, and I counted five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, about fourteen of them. Can you just maybe alleviate any stress I might have about what does that mean? Is that something that could come back to haunt us down the road?
Uh, yeah, well, we always list generally that it's under technical review until we hear the comments from the public and have time to analyze that through our separate departments, whether engineering or planning. So, yeah, so no stress. We'll be back with responses.
Any other questions at this time? Counsel Willis.
Through your worship. I remember when we looked at this project in two thousand twenty-three, one of the concerns expressed was that we're building straight streets, and straight streets create speed, and then it becomes our problem to fix that. I'm still seeing straight streets. So what has changed in this project since we we raised that issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Willis. We have, the traffic has been peer reviewed. The inclusion of roundabout or traffic circles, I think, roundabouts have been included to try and slow down the speeds on those streets as well as an alignment of the road network to try and eliminate those straightaway street, streetscapes. But somebody from engineering probably could elaborate on that. There he comes.
Incoming.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Willis's question. So the proponents engineer has submitted two different traffic calming concepts that have included different elements such as curb extensions, so bump outs at intersections to to provide traffic calming and or center islands, medians, again, similar to what would be on the country club estates development, again, for traffic calming purposes. So these different concepts will be included generally in our draft plan conditions. So that traffic calming will be built by the proponent.
Any other questions at this time? Seeing none. Thank you. And we have the developers representative here from FOTAN, if you would like to come forward. And again, just press the button so the light comes on and share your information.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you, my name is Alicia Ackroyd. I'm a registered professional planner with FOTAN Planning and Design out of our Kingston office. I'm joined this evening by my colleague Yugo Leclerc, who's beside me here, and also with us in chambers this evening, we have the civil engineer for the project and the applicant. And the applicant is here for the applications to be discussed for draft plan of subdivision, official plan amendment, and zoning bylaw amendment for part of lots twenty-nine and thirty concessions three and four, also municipally known as nineteen Main Street in Odessa. Next slide, please. The subject site being discussed today is just under forty hectares in size and is at the western sort of most extent of the Odessa Settlement Area Boundary, just south of County Road Two or Main Street. And it is directly adjacent or directly west of the existing subdivisions that have been recently developed and are being developed at Babcock Mills and Mill Creek subdivisions. And you can see from the slide in front of us here that there are a number of amenities in Odessa that are near the site, including a couple of schools and commercial uses as well. And I would just like to point out that the site is comprised of sort of what looks like two properties, but is actually three properties. You can see that there's a faint dashed line vertical sort of through that larger swath of land, and the the southernmost property or part of the the subject site is separated from the larger portion by an unopened road allowance. And then the larger portion is comprised of two properties. So throughout the presentation, I'll say sort of the west, the east, and the southernmost properties. Next slide, please. The subject site is split designated by the Loyalist Township Official Plan. So the eastern portion of the site is designated for low-density residential development, and the west side and south portion of the site are designated rural. And the low-density residential designation permits that low-density development through either single or semi-detached dwellings on municipal services, while the rural designation permits very little lot creation, a very select number of rural uses, and does not currently permit development on urban sort of municipal services. Next slide, please. Similarly, the site is zoned in part for rural uses as well. And again, on private services, and that is the north, I would say about three quarters of the northern part of the site and the southern parcel of the site as well. And then in the northeast corner of the site, we have a development zone that applies to the land. And the development zone really only permits the existing use of whatever it applies to. So it does anticipate future rezoning applications if future development were ever to occur on those zones. Next slide, please. The intent of the applications being brought forward for review today are effectively to create six hundred and eighty-seven residential units and to extend and sort of connect to the existing residential subdivisions located to the east, which would then round out the development in the Odessa Settlement Boundary and implement the goals and principle of the Odessa West Neighborhood Plan. Next slide, please. As has been previously mentioned by staff, there was a previous public meeting in April of two thousand twenty-three that discussed a previous iteration of this development proposal, and we just wanted to highlight some of the main changes through sort of an image of the draft plan of subdivision as it's currently being proposed. One of the key changes that occurred through both hearing council comment, public comment, and through technical review with township staff was the relocation of one of the larger park blocks in the subdivision. So previously, in the top right or northeast corner of the site, there was a park being proposed. It has now been relocated further away from Main Street or County Road Two and has been sort of slightly configured to be more rectilinear and more programmable by township park staff standards as far as being more conducive to perhaps different things that they might see fit for programming, sports fields, jungle gym equipment, et cetera. So that has been relocated to the southwest of the site, and it lines up quite well actually with the proposed pedestrian network that goes north-south on the westernmost edge of the subdivision plan, which is mainly just to be a pedestrian network. And you can also see sort of just south of the larger park parcel, that's where that unopened road allowance is that's currently being utilized as a trail network through Odessa. And on a later slide, it'll demonstrate how that kind of connects into another park block through the site. So that's one of the key changes. Additionally, the the changes that have occurred in place of where that park initially was up in that northeast corner, we now are proposing two medium-density blocks for development. And in part, those blocks are being proposed to really increase the different product types for medium-density units. So obviously, there are singles and semi-detached dwelling units being proposed, but to increase those housing types in the neighborhood, the medium-density built forms are also being proposed. And those one hundred and three units that those two blocks will be able to facilitate the development of is in part a change from the previous proposal because there were contemplations for permissions for detached secondary dwelling units in the rear yards. You may recall in sort of the Carriage House style development, and through listening to public comment and council concern related to the sort of built form. Instead, those permissions are no longer being requested, and it's just going to be through other medium-density forms that are permitted in the zoning bylaws already permitted. And in general, there's going to be a greater mix. So there is an increase in semi-detached dwellings being proposed from the previous proposal and a slight decrease in the single detached dwelling units being proposed. Next slide, please. So all in all, six hundred and eighty-seven residential units are being proposed with one hundred and ninety-four of those being single detached dwellings. And you can see those in yellow on the slide. Three hundred and ninety semi-detached dwelling units or one hundred and ninety-five dwelling buildings for semis. Those are in light orange, and the darker orange reflects those medium-density blocks to accommodate one hundred and three residential dwelling units. As I previously discussed, there are a few park areas throughout the site. And on this image that you can see just past that unopened road allowance, there's another parkland being dedicated to the south that would sort of provide us another connection. And then just south of that, there is an environmental protection area that's being encompassed into the site and an expanded stormwater management facility that from the existing in the eastern subdivision, just in order to accommodate the the new growth and the development, there's going to be an expansion of that as well. And really can see there are two entrances to the existing residential neighborhood to the east. So there's going to be added connectivity. And then there's just the one entrance and exit from the site to Main Street. Next slide, please. The development proposal in its first iteration and still currently was supported by a number of technical studies through the technical circulation with township staff and other commenting agencies. Some of these studies have been updated to reflect the existing, or sorry, the now currently proposed changes. And the technical professionals who had previously provided those studies have confirmed that those minor changes that have been made so far do not change any of the recommendations. Previously, staff had spoke to the updates to the traffic sort of circulation related to some traffic calming measures as again a result of comments that were received at the last public meeting. And then there was a peer review done of the environmental impact study. And so the recommendations were sort of updated to reflect that indeed this proposal being brought forth is still able to be accommodated adjacent to that environmental protection area I spoke of earlier. And then I should note too that the noise impact feasibility study that was completed as part of the complete application will at a later stage, when the medium-density blocks are developed, that will be updated to reflect that medium-density built form. But currently, there's no built form being proposed there, so it will be updated at a later date. Next slide, please. So in order to facilitate the development as currently proposed, an official plan amendment is required. And that is for the northeast block there on the in sort of darker speckled orange. That's to reflect that medium-density block in the northeast. And then the western parcel will also be proposed to be redesignated to the low-density residential designation as well as the medium-density residential designation. I should note as well that the southern parcel does not need to be redesignated because the proposed park and environmental protection area and stormwater management facilities are already permitted through the rural designation. Next slide, please. A zoning bylaw amendment is also required in order to facilitate the development as proposed. So for majority of the sites, a site-specific exception to the residential type-four zone is being proposed, and it in just for clarification for comparison, it's quite similar to those zones that are already existing to the east in the existing subdivision there. So we're just really looking to update those performance standard to be a bit more contemporary, a bit more compact, and reflect the newer development that's occurred in the village. So we're seeking to reduce the lot area, lot frontage, and the yard setbacks, everything except for the rear yard setback, and to increase the maximum lot coverage permitted on the sites. The R five zone or the residential type-five zone, which permits medium-density built forms, is being proposed for those northern two most sites for the medium-density blocks. The open space zone is proposed for the stormwater management facility and the southernmost park block, and then the environmental protection zone is proposed to be located on the identified areas by the ecologists. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposed draft plan of subdivision, official plan amendment, and zoning bylaw amendment are consistent with the PPS and are in conformity with the County of Lennox and Addington official plan and the Loyalist Township official plan, and the proposed subdivision represents good land use planning overall. Next slide, please. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions or receive any comments that either counsel or members of the public have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments at this time? Counsel Budrick.
Through you, sir. I have a couple. The medium density, would they have their own parking on-site of those other lots?
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, the parking would be accommodated within those blocks.
With the two different park areas just being at the back of the subdivision, will it be parking on-site for people to access those who live in different areas of the municipality?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the specifics of that park block have not been identified in terms of the parking. However, street parking is anticipated to also be accommodated, you know, driving to children's sports games, parking on the street, not in the winter.
Other questions? Council Willis.
Through you, Your Worship. Could you elaborate? You made the comment that the single detached have been decreased, and there was a plan to have secondary units in them. There's nothing that stops anyone from building a secondary unit now. So any concerns we had about the density of people on those lots hasn't changed, has it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I'm more than happy to provide some further context there. The additional secondary suite permissions that were being previously proposed were specifically in a detached form. So that was that's not currently permitted by the Loyalist Township zoning bylaw. So correct to your point that, yes, you can still have an additional residential unit within a single detached lot in Loyalist and throughout most of Ontario. But if it was mostly related to that built form, so taking up more of the coverage and related to parking. So in some ways, yes, you can still add density, but it's not that the site is going to be blanket zoned to permit detached rear yard accessory structures or accessory units. Sorry, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would also add that one of the provisions that we're proposing, we heard a lot of concern around parking for secondary units. We know that's a challenge that Loyalist Township is experiencing. So one of the provisions that we're proposing would require a minimum separation, a minimum six-meter setback for your drive for the garages. So there would always be room for parking space in the garage and in the driveway. And of course, there are quite a bit of permissions in the township for paving in the front yard as well. So there might be opportunity for three, four cars, depending on the size of the lot and size of the garage.
Thank you. Other other questions? Council Proderick.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have several questions, so I'm going to go sort of working backwards here. 670, 687 units. Without the reduction of any lot size, how many units would you have? Do you know off the top of your head?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure off the top of my head. No, sorry.
And to continue, through just watching your presentation, the one air photo that I looked at with some interest was the one it showed. And basically, that property is covered, I would say, 50% in cedar trees. Is that fair to say? Just just on a look from above.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there are a mix of trees, cedars being some of them, yes.
So I guess the question goes from that. What what kind of tree management program have you suggested or do you suggest to sort of, you know, we're always talking about environment, keeping the balance, and that's something that I wouldn't want to see a total clear cut, I guess, of the area.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, from the recommendations of the ecologist through the environmental impact assessment, there have been recommendations made related to when the trees should be removed on the site to facilitate the development. So between the periods of April and the end of August, generally speaking, it's requested that no tree removal occur during those periods. Those are nesting periods. So the developer is aware of that sort of general rule of thumb and is not anticipating to remove any trees during those periods. And also, there is going to be a phasing of the development. So there has been a phasing plan submitted. So it will not be necessarily at all at once. It'll just be to sustain the development as phased.
Fair enough. The next question, I don't know, I should have probably brought this up with staff, but the moving of the one park to the southern part of it, having been a parent for 22 years, and I remember pushing strollers around, it's sort of, I understand the need to move it away from Highway Two, but I would think a more centralized for the resident, I'm thinking the resident, a more centralized park might have been a better thought, I guess, put it that way. Any thoughts on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. So through the technical circulation, there were conversations with township staff, park staff related to potential options of where this larger park could go. Eventually, the subject site for the park was decided upon in part due to its connectivity with that pathway that goes up north-south as well as the trail system that goes east-west and then connecting into that southern park. Additionally, as far as this to, I believe, is Councilor Budrick's question regarding parking, having enough street parking and street frontage to access the park was also a consideration rather than put it sort of on an island in the subdivision. Those were some of the considerations made when choosing the location of the park.
Okay, and just one last one, please. So in the in the staff report, page 13, and I'm just going to throw this out there as a comment more than a question. It was under urban design policies, and it was 5.7.7.2, safe and interesting, attractive streetscapes. I don't think your plan gives us an attractive streetscape. And I'll reference with before this meeting, I drove to the other side where it's similar. And my opinion, it's not very attractive. You have a straight line. In the middle, you have sort of a cement circle or whatever. The circle sort of sucked the life out of the whole look there, but that's just my own opinion. And I would just say this in my last statement is that the Pulis design of 2011 is much more attractive, I think, in my opinion. And I don't have the background and the knowledge you people have, but I'll just leave it out there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, here's Eric, sorry. Kyle Nielsen, I'm for with four for engineering, I'm the civil engineer on this project. And just to help with a few of the comments that have came from council, staff have requested a parking lot in the park. And I believe that will be a condition of the approval on the park's location in the southwest corner. So what happened after the first public meeting was we actually went through three or four different versions of the park location and road configurations that we ran by staff and their consulting team. And those included a central park with roads running west to east, different roads with Ls and different shapes. And what the feedback was, was that really the snowplowing and the public works, they wanted the straight roads and the grid pattern. They prefer they preferred they preferred us integrating the traffic calming in the grid pattern for township efficiency in snowplowing. As far as the streetscape goes, some differences we're going to be doing with this one compared to Babcock Mills is we're going to be doing a lot more center island islands, a lot more roundabouts, some curb juddins and juddos to try to modify that streetscape. I guess a couple other things that weren't kind of mentioned, we were talking about the the secondary and the third units we were proposing in kind of the Carriage House styles. What we've removed from the application is we were looking to reduce the parking ratios, and we were looking to reduce the parking space sizes and allow for shared driveways for the lots. All those provisions have been removed from the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time for council? Seeing none, thank you for the information. And now we'll turn it to the public portion. And if there's anyone in chambers that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. And seeing none, we'll go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening, if you use a raised hand feature, we can bring you into the meeting. None? Very well. So that completes the public meeting portion. Thank you very much. Of council, we have the report with the recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor.
I move that the report from the Development Services Division, November 26, 2024, re-public meeting, Fields of Loyalist, Creekford Developments, Draft Plan of Subdivision D-12294, Official Plan Amendment D-090042022, and Zoning Bylaw Amendment D-140162022 be received and that a recommendation be brought forward to council once the comments from the township departments, agencies, and the public have been addressed.
So moved, seconded by? Council Parks. Mover, any comments? Seconder? Other members? Call a question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Okay, so moving forward, open forum. Fifteen minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. Any individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meeting section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance with the Clerks Division or raise their hand, and if participating virtually, use the raised hand feature. So today, we do we have anyone registered today? Okay, thank you. So there's Karen McKenzie. And is it an item that's on the agenda this evening? Okay, so that was the only one that was registered. Is there anyone else in chambers that wishes to speak under open forum? None, I'll go to the virtual audience. Is there anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak this evening under open forum? If so, please use a raised hand feature, and we can bring you into the meeting. Seeing none, well, that completes open forum. Have no delegations. On to items for consideration. 2024 Amherst Scholarship Fund. We have a report and recommendation. We have staff come forward. Is there any additional information you wish to share at this time?
No, Your Worship, no additional information for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a recommendation, we'd like to put it on the floor for consideration. Council Willis.
I move that the report from the Finance Department dated November 26, 2024, re-2024 Amherst Scholarship Fund be received, and that council approve that each of the two eligible applicants receive $1,000 from the Amherst Scholarship Fund.
So moved, do we have a seconder? Council Parks was in tournament head fire now. Mover, any comments? Seconder? Sorry, go ahead, mover.
Two things, really. One is to congratulate the two young women who are pursuing their studies at St. Lawrence College and Durham College, and also to thank the organizations and individuals that contribute to support the fund.
Thank you. Seconder?
Yes, just to add what Council Willis has said, it's nice to be able to actually be able to share these ones with people.
Other comments from council? Seeing none, or call a question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. Proposed telecommunication tower, 925 Stella Forty-Foot Road, Amherst Island. Staff shuffle? Welcome. And is there any additional information to share at this time or just here to answer questions?
No, Your Worship, just to answer questions.
Thank you. Council, we have a recommended report with the recommendation. Would someone like to put a motion on the floor so we can address this item? Council Proderick.
I would recommend that the report from the Development Services Division, November 26, 2024, re-proposed telecommunication tower, 925 Stella Forty-Foot Road, Amherst Island be received, and that council support the concurrence and installation of proposed telecommunication tower facility located in concession 9 North Shore, Part Lot One, being part one on registered plan 29R-6065 and addressed as 925 Stella Forty-Foot Road, Amherst Island.
Comments or questions from the mover? Seconder? Any other member? Council Willis.
Through you, Your Worship. There've been a number of questions that have come my way over the the last few days. And I think partially it's because we have not really heard from ExplorNet on what the plan is, though it's very exciting to anticipate having fiber optic on on Amherst Island. One of the questions was, and it is addressed in the report, but just to confirm that we have talked with Orange Air Ambulance, and they're not concerned about proximity to the helipad?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Willis, we do have correspondence from from Orange saying that they have no concerns with the location. And they actually are, even though they're not required to have lighting on top of the tower, they they did recommend that as an extra precaution, they still do include some, which which they are as part of their their approval through IESO as well.
The other question that had come from the public was, there is already a tower on the island. Is that one not sufficiently tall for them to get the right line of sight for the service that they're bringing?
Yes, through you, they they did indicate, I did confirm with them, as one of the requirements actually of IESO is that they need to explore other co-location opportunities before proposing a new tower. So they did prove to me that they did, that that was explored, and the infrastructure wasn't sufficient in order for their their plans to expand the the fiber, and they couldn't make the the direct connections.
My final one. If you could explain a bit about what the process is for this kind of a project. So does the township approve the entire plan, or is this something that because it's a utility, they have different rights and and how will it all go? And also, I understand that by approving the tower tonight, it's not necessarily approving anything else, but this company needs this approval for the tower to move the project forward, if that's correct?
That's correct. Project can't move forward without without the tower. But then in addition to that, that number of municipal consents are also required from the municipality, from the Public Works Division, in order to go across some across our roads and so on as well.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, or call a question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. And now I would entertain a motion that council now resolve to go into committee of the whole. Council Budrick, so moved, seconded by Council Hennes. All in favor? Motion is passed. It will just take us a couple of minutes to set up. Hmm? What's that? What's that?
Okay, I'll call this Committee of the Whole to order at 7:21. Any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Items for consideration, 13.3.1 Draft Capacity Allocation Policy, and I'll turn it over to either the Director or the Manager.
Yep, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so yeah, staff are here to present the draft capacity allocation policy for council, or sorry, Committee of the Whole's consideration. So about this time last year, uh, we brought forward the, the proposed policy uh, for Committee of the Whole's consideration, and staff have been working diligently over the last year to, uh, to prepare what is in front of you tonight, uh, including extensive consultations with the development community, the MECP, and, and a number of other parties. So there are a few, uh, core concepts that I'm going to discuss and outline that are included in the policy just to help, uh, council understand where it is staff are hoping to take this policy and what the intent of the policy is. So the first item, uh, that is a major, uh, sort of new policy direction is the term provisional capacity allocation. And so what this term does is it introduces the concept of, uh, what it sounds like, provisional capacity allocation. So, um, while a development is proceeding on the basis that they will get capacity at some point in time, the development is subject to a holding symbol, which would prevent it from proceeding until it gets the final capacity allocation, which is the next term. And so that final capacity allocation is what allows the developer to actually build the individual house or the townhome or the actual unit that requires the capacity. And so the reason staff have introduced these two concepts uh, is because of the, uh, large commitment that is required when looking at, uh, larger draft plans, uh, such as the one that was reviewed earlier tonight with Fields of Loyalist, where it's, uh, 600-plus units that would be developed over multiple years. Uh, so when we're looking at that, if, under the current framework, if, uh, we, uh, were to give that development, uh, the draft plan approval, we would have to allocate that entire 600 units of capacity, but we know that that capacity isn't going to be used for multiple years. So in, uh, this new framework, what it allows, uh, the township to do would be to allocate that capacity as provisional, subject to a holding symbol, so that the development can only proceed in the phases as outlined with the final. And then that provisional allows us to track that capacity and better understand when we know that it's going to be required, whether that's in two, three, four, or five years. And we could then look at allocating capacity to other developments. So, uh, in this, in a hypothetical scenario where you have two large developments going on, and you had to allocate, say there were both 600 units, you'd have to allocate 1,200 units, and that takes up the vast majority of our available allocation. So by having this provisional capacity term, it allows us to do that allocation and proceed with other smaller developments that are, uh, within the township and the various plants. The important concept there is the hold symbol is a legal mechanism that allows us to prevent development from proceeding. However, the intent of the policy is very much to provide a commitment to the developer that at some point in time, that capacity will be provided to them. And so in, uh, the hypothetical scenario where we were to allocate, uh, say 110% of our provisional capacity, so allocate more capacity than is available in our plants, that has to be a commitment that would be made by council to expand the plants, uh, at some point in time. Obviously, we have the legal mechanism there to control when that happens, but by providing that development approval to the, the specific developments, uh, that would be a commitment that they are able to proceed, and that council would expand the plants at that time. So the way, uh, the policy is written is that we have, uh, outlined delegated authority. Uh, so staff have delegated authority to allocate capacity within the current constraints of the plant, and any capacity that would be above the current constraint of plants would have to come to council, because that, again, is that commitment to expand the plants, at which time council would have the option to, uh, say, no, uh, we don't want to do that, or say, yes, we will go ahead with that, and the provisional capacity could be allocated. A couple other, uh, sort of, uh, other, uh, items within the policy to, to bring to council's attention are just how we're dealing with the legacy allocations. So anyone who has an existing connection would obviously, they have their final capacity. We can't remove that connection, uh, as well as there are a number of agreements that the township has made over the years with, uh, various, uh, either developers or industrial sites or anything like that that have specifically outlined what capacity that they have either purchased or, or whatever other mechanism was made at the time. Um, and so the, uh, proposed policy, uh, would defer to those agreements, because obviously those are legal agreements, and we are not, uh, if we were to avoid those through this policy, uh, that could put us in a, a legal fight with, uh, either the industrial sites or the specific developers. So this policy would then defer to those specific agreements and whatever clauses. The last item to draw to council's attention would just be the infilling clause. Um, so we've aligned this policy with the various planning application, uh, policies, which identified that, uh, 10 units or less, uh, will not need, uh, development applications, planning applications, and they're treated as infilling. And so as such, uh, if, uh, proponent, a developer is not coming in for those planning applications, uh, then we would not, uh, require them to submit an application for capacity. Uh, instead, what staff will do is during the annual uncommitted reserve capacity report that comes before council, identify the number of units that are being held in reserve for that infilling capacity. Uh, so that way, it doesn't place any additional burden on, on smaller home builders and things like that, and allows those developments to go ahead while still retaining the, the necessary capacity that our plants, uh, need. Uh, that's the highlights of the policy. Um, any questions, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. His comments on policy. Uh, Councilor Parks.
Thank you, through the Chair, uh, to Mr. McDonald. Understand how they came about. Um, they've been in fact for a number of years. Has there been any sort of thought about? Is it any sort of consideration? When these legacies are there, and I know there's a legal binding. But changing that to provide that, there is some financial component for continuing to hold these or these legacies? I understand what I'm asking, so whether it's a flat rate that they pay, because what's happening is that these legacies are holding up, um, connection to our services, correct? So we're not, we're not actually operating our plants at capacity. So we're putting a disservice on our clients at full capacity, because we're not receiving revenues for those. I know.
Mr. Chair, um, it would depend on the specific terms of the agreements and what, what we would be able to do. I, I can't answer exactly your question, um, because I, I haven't looked at that component of it, but what I can say is I have looked at components, uh, of various agreements to look at potentially buying out, uh, capacity that's been purchased in the past. And unfortunately, there are buyout clauses in there which, uh, which fix the price that was paid in, say, 1995 or whenever the year of the agreement is to inflation. And as, um, you know, everyone's aware, inflation has been a little crazy lately, uh, and it would require a substantial amount of dollars to purchase back that capacity, even ju, even the bro-rated remaining capacity. It's still a large, large dollar figure. Um, so it does place limitations on what the township is able to do.
Thank you.
Councilor Proderick? Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions. So right now, do we have any idea how many legacy, um, applications, or however you want to word it, are in place right now? Like, would it be 100 units? Do you have any idea on that?
I don't have that number offhand. It would be more than 100 units. Um, just thinking of some of the developments in Amherstview which are still to proceed, uh, as well as some of the remaining development in, uh, Odessa, uh, it is, uh, more than 100 units, but the specific number I don't have.
This is my next follow-up. So are there any restrictions on legacies right now? Or can they sort of legacy for a long time?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So what I would do is separate them into sort of two different groups. Those that have signed agreements with the township to purchase the capacity, uh, such as the developers in Bath, uh, and those that have received capacity allocations through draft plan approvals. Um, so, uh, which would be the developer, uh, primarily in the Lakeside Ponds Development in Amherstview, uh, received their capacity through draft plan. Uh, so in that case, um, the availability to us to claw that back would be the draft plan, uh, lapsing time period. So if the draft plan lapses and needs to come back in for renewal, um, that's when we have that capacity to, to review that. That said, with the proposed policy, um, any, uh, allocations of capacity that have been done through draft plan, we would then have those additional clauses in there that would allow us to revoke capacity following the, the terms and conditions outlined in the, the policy.
And just, uh, if you could expand a bit on the plant, you used that plant scenario, and I think you said 110%, you went over capacity. Get to that scenario, is that a case of then, if that scenario played out, where, uh, development fees are already in the bank? Is it something we would get from the developer at that point? Is it like, maybe just a small financial picture?
Yep, so, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so development charges and impost fees, um, I'll focus on the impost fees, because that's what pays for the sewer and water connections. Um, so those are collected at the time the individual unit is constructed. Um, so the individual builder that's, say, building a single-family home pays the impost fees that then, uh, go into our reserve accounts. Um, whereas the capacity allocation occurs at draft plan approval stage, um, which, as I mentioned earlier, could be several years out. So it could be the case where a draft plan gets approved for however many units, and say they built 100 units per year, we would be collecting the impost fees, the growth fees, uh, for those 100 units each year that those homes are actually receiving building permits. Uh, so that, there is a bit of a lag there in between. When that is, and what this policy does is better align when we're collecting those fees with the final capacity allocation and when we actually need or observing that flow at the plants.
Sorry, I didn't blame it on Mr. McDonald. He said something that made me think for a minute. In, in a development where there's 10 phases, let's say, in terms of a 36-month, you know, whatever, does that just apply to get the project started? So if I get phase one done within my 36 months, am I, do I have any, uh, I don't know, restriction or whatever to get the second part of the phase done? Like, does it have to fall within 36 months after that? Or is it just sort of get your first plans in and move on? I'm just thinking, you know, uh, some of the questions about, uh, capacity, and, you know, maybe there's other builders that need the capacity, but others are sitting on whatever. Can you clear that up for me?
Yeah, so, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. If I'm understanding the question correctly, um, you're trying to understand if there's developers that are sitting on capacity for an extended period of time, and, and if that, uh, that 36-month period, say the draft plan approval period, um, if there is, uh, if there's any other restrictions that are associated with that period. So, uh, so I'm looking back at our manager of planning, uh, because I was hoping she might be able to help me with the draft plan side of things. Um, but the, in terms of the capacity allocation, uh, there is a number of developers that do sit on that capacity for, for a while, and that's what this, uh, policy is aimed at targeting, is that it wouldn't prevent other developments within the, uh, community from proceeding, because those other developers that are sitting on it is just provisional, and that's not tying up actual flows at the plant. So really, what we are focused on is what the flows at the plant are, and what is the legal mechanism that we can use to control those flows? So that way, we don't have to expand our plant unnecessarily, uh, before those flows are actually there.
You didn't have to look over your shoulder, thank you. Other questions, committee? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I just have a few, mostly with the provisional capacity. So there'll be an H holding on provisional, and as was presented this evening by the, the planners, they obviously always develop in phases, as you mentioned. So as they do a phase, say they do phase one, the H would be removed. Is it removed just on each phase as they get prepared for developing that phase, and it stays on subsequent ones until the project is completed?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, that's, that's exactly correct. So the H would be applied at the draft plan approval slash zoning bylaw amendment phase, and then, uh, as they come in for subdivision agreements and, uh, building permits, the H would be removed.
Thank you. And another one, um, it was mentioned that if we go, if we provide provisional and we go over the actual capacity of the plant, then we're basically committing ourselves to expand the plant. Does it force us into a timeframe or anything like that? Or it's just we're saying at some point, when the funds are available and we're ready, we will expand the plant?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so there is no timeframe associated with it in the policy. Speaking just sort of broadly, um, I, it's potential we could get into, uh, legal issues if we provided that and sat on it for, say, 15 years and didn't expand the plant, um, because that would, uh, bring up some of the developer approvals process and things like that. Um, so there is that risk there. So, um, the recommendation from staff would be to move swiftly, um, and not, you know, wait, uh, for that. Um, but it's also understanding that there is a sort of lead-leg time associated with providing that provisional capacity, which over-allocates the plant, but our flows, the actual flows, the final capacity at the plant, aren't quite there. So there is a lead-leg time of a, several years associated before that, uh, the actual flows at the plant cap what we can allocate for final capacity. And so that, uh, timeframe in between, it could be three, four, maybe even five years, depending on, you know, the number of developments and other things that come in. That time would be used by the township, uh, to go through detailed design, MECP approvals, and, and get shovels in the ground and start constructing there. Um, so certainly, uh, there's no fixed timelines, um, but the recommendations from staff at the time would be to start that process. So that way, uh, once the capacities at the plant, the actual flows are reaching the total capacity, uh, we are in a position to then expand the plant and proceed accordingly with the development, so that there is no sort of, from a developer standpoint, lag in sitting there waiting for the plant to be expanded.
Other questions, comments, committee?
Seeing none, there is a recommendation, um, and there is an "or" in there. One is to receive the report, and then it's either two or three. Councilor Willis.
I move that the report from the Engineering Environment, meant Environment Division dated November 26, 2024, redraft capacity allocation policy be received, and that Committee of the Whole recommend the policy for adoption to council.
So moved, seconded by Mr. Mayor. Mover, any comment? Mr. Mayor, any comment? Anybody else? Call a question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Can I get a recommendation that the Committee of the Whole now adjourn? Councilor Rudereck, seconded by Councilor Innes. All those in favor? Motion is carried, we are adjourned, this Committee of the Whole at 7:40.
Okay, so we will be back in council meeting now. And so the next item up, our notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion for this evening? Saying none. Are there any direct motions to be presented this evening? Saying none. Consent agenda. All of these can be approved with the one recommendation, or if someone would wish to extract one, just make it noted, and we can extract it for further comment. Are there any to be extracted this evening? None? Would someone like to make a recommendation or a motion for all of them? Counselor Budrick?
Recommend that all the items of consent agenda dated November 26, 2024, be approved as presented, and that the necessary action be taken.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Ennis. Any comments with the mover?
I thought about pulling the BGC partnership update out, that's, obviously, we saw tonight the great things they're doing in our community.
Absolutely, thank you. Seconder, any comments? Other members? Saying none, call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements, any announcements this evening from members of council? Counselor Prudrick?
I'd just like to thank the staff for the Sunday down at Fairfield, I guess, late the night, and I don't know if I got that right. Light up the season, thank you. I'm thinking Cornwall, sorry. I had a great time, and it was nice to see, again, as in many of our events, the different demographics, lots of younger people out, and it's always nice to see reindeers and horses.
Thank you. Other announcements this evening? Saying none. That event was very well attended, too. I was on the table where the, of course, where the cookies were, the chocolate milk. And I believe the cookies being donated by Foodland, I think there were 500 donated, and when it was left, I think there was only three in the basket. So that's a pretty good score on how many at least took a cookie, and not everyone did. So it was very well attended. And I'd just like to mention that myself, the chief, and a few other staff members attended the emergency management exercise today in Napanee. They were the host, but it included, if I get this right, and I'm looking at the chief, just in case I'm wrong, from Tyananega Township to the city of Kingston, and from Haddington Highlands to the lake. We're all there, involved in it. And it was a good exercise, it was one that made you think, it was a train derailment within the town, but it was also, it had many factors. And so it actually, at our table, it did draw in comments from every single person at the table with their different areas of expertise, and I thought it was very well orchestrated, and it was a good scenario, and it was educational, and also being able to meet and become comfortable for dealing with situations in the future. We now have a face and a name for municipalities in our area to be able to talk to and draw. So we want to thank Napanee for hosting that. Any final announcements? Confirmatory bylaw, could I have a motion for the confirmatory bylaw? Counselor Prudrick?
I would move that bylaw 2024-100 to confirm the proceedings of the Council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal a confirmatory bylaw.
So moved, do I have a seconder? Counselor Willis? All in favor? Motion is passed. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Budrick? Seconded by Counselor Ennis. All in favor? Motion is passed, we are adjourned at 7:45.